The next thing. Ice cream.
It is ten AM, we'll go ahead and get our meeting started, we'll welcome everybody out today. If you would, let us all rise for the pleasure of leeches.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's borrow his from him for silence, please. Come in. One change in the agenda, we're going to add R and D architect down in presentations of the board at the end of section two. I hear a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Second.
It's a second, any discussion? Not all in favor? Five votes. Just everybody look over the minutes, eleven seven meeting. If no one.
Would you accept?
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Five votes. Open floor for public comment, if anyone has any comments to talk about, please come forward this time. If there's no movement, we'll close public comment, move on down to presentation of the board. First order of business, the retiree recognition, and I'll take that. We're going to pass out some awards today for people that's retired. And as I call your names, if you would come forward, Debbie Carrico. Just in time. This lady's got twenty-seven years with Allegheny County. Next is Barbara Young. He has thirty-three years of service with DSS. Margaret Williams. That's elections, thirty-five years. Forty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, excuse me. Twenty-five years, thank you.
One of those.
Walter Shepard. Out here today. Risa Hurley. Appreciate Randy, all he's done, thank you. Richard Mooneyhan. He's not with us either, Richard's got in living years. Let's give all these folks a good round of applause. Department Commissioner, Bob Irwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark and I have been on this board for eight years. We've been through a lot of downtimes and a lot of uptimes, and we're on that uptime right now. And I'd just like to thank Mark for eight years of dedicated service to this board, but more important to the people of Allegheny County. He's been a good friend, and he's a good friend to the people of Allegheny County. And I know he's got a full-time job lined up here, he's working, I think, day and night on it, but I think Mark, like I said, has been a good friend for the people of Allegheny County, and I appreciate all that he has done. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Next is Bill Wolfsburg. I think I know him pretty good. Bill and I have been, for the last four years, we've worked, along with the rest of the board, we've worked tirelessly for the people of the county. Bill's been our leader, he's done a great job. He's, like with Mark, he's been through some rough times with us and some good times with us. I think we may allude to one of those good times later on today, I'm hoping, but we served, I think, on one of the big committees that I've really enjoyed, was the finance committee. If everybody remembers back about in the year, I think it was the year two thousand, twenty twenty, that we'd gotten a sort of a nasty letter from the state about our finances. Well, this whole board took it to heart. We knew we had a lot to do, and one of the things we did was hire Michael Carter, but Bill was always behind the scenes pushing us along to do the right thing, to get our finances back in order. And I think it was about two or three months ago, we got a letter, or it's been a little longer, they had a letter from the state that we were off their watch list. I think we're now on our, on the good list, but there's been a lot of different programs that Bill's gone through, and that's just one of the examples. I appreciate everything he's done for the board, I appreciate his friendship, I just think he's been a phenomenal leader. Thank you, Bill. You know, I would invite either one of them to make a, make a speech, Mark, that will put all, what's going on, if you want to.
Gee, thanks. I, first of all, I, you know, it has been, it has been an umbling, honorable experience to serve the people. I, opening experience. Just tried to give it my best from day one, I believe in term limits, I think two terms is enough, some new blood, some new ideas. You, you fight a lot of battles through a lot of this stuff. You know, at the end of the day, it's about delivering good, positive deliverables to the people and the citizens of Allegheny County. Seen, we're on our third manager since I came on, hopefully. There's been a lot of positives and a lot of wins, I think we have a strong leadership in our, in our manager's office, thanks to a couple of them sitting here, and they have built, I think, a good structure and force throughout the organization. So it's, it's a top-down thing, it's, it's been an honor to serve, maybe not through everything that we've served through, but it has really been an honor to serve with those that are serving and those prior. One of the things I know in some of our early meetings, we, I would contend to, I would tend to want to complain about the previous board. Well, every board has its job, every board has its battles, and the next board, I pray for them, and I encourage you all to pray for them, that they would go on and lead this county to a higher place than where it is right now. We're all in this together, but that will be a new board, and they'll have their new challenges, and we need to support them as, as citizens. And I may come back and visit them once in a while, but probably not for at least six months, I don't want to see anybody. Thank you all, and thank you to all the retirees and all the years that you've put in. I tell you, that's one thing that I've, I would like to close on, is it is amazing. I mean, what, what the county government does is a lot, but it has its limits, and there are so many people that are meeting so many needs beyond what we can do in this county, in this community, and people are given of their time and their resources. As a private citizen, before I stepped into this role, I did not realize that, I knew some of it, and to some extent, and I still don't know it all, but I am very thankful for all of the people who partner with us to, to serve and meet the many, many needs throughout this community that I dare say a lot I still don't even know about, so thank you all.
Thank you, Mark, let's give Mark.
Bill, you got a few words?
Yeah, I want to share along the same lines as Mark, it all ties together, and, and we have been through some good times and some hard times, and we got through them, and everybody does their best to their ability to, to get through things, and if somebody had said to me five or six years ago, that I would have been doing the last four years what I've been doing, I'd have thought this was all for rocker, but I've enjoyed being here and trying to do what's right, and, and we have been through some historical times. We, everybody went through the COVID, of course, and, and that is what it is, and I hate we lost some folks in the county, that, that really bothered me, and, and then we moved from that in about four or five months into the earthquake, or in August, you know, and that was a first for this county, and I reckon the state, but that was handled real well, thanks to the Daniel and Travis and all the crew and the commissioner's support. I'll never forget that Sunday, we called an emergency meeting at three o'clock, and everybody was here, and that got the wheels to rolling, and that's, that's turned out to be good, people's got their homes rebuilt and repaired, and they spent a lot of money, it's up towards twenty-four million dollars up here, but I thank everybody for their support, and I want to thank the county employees and the department heads that, that work, and I'll never forget the first year we'd done formed a budget committee. Everybody knew what we had to do, and, and, but here's the point I'm trying to make, is every department head came to this table, and offered, tried to do their best to cut everything they could cut, I think Michael will agree with that, and Bobby, and, and they were wanting to help get the situation back into control and get it back, get us back to where we needed to be, but I thank you, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate being here. We'll move on down, next order of business, Library Report, Ms. Joan Scherle and Bobby. Oh, hang on a minute. Hang on, I made a mistake right here, we need to hold y'all for just a second, I forgot to add on right here, the R and D personnel.
Sir.
Little bit of history, what you have in front of you is the bid tab that was recently received, I guess last week, on the tenth at three o'clock, and this is for the ninety South Main project, which, little bit of history, the earthquake you mentioned, damaged that building beyond repair, the addition. We assessed it for you guys approximately last year, and then, and over the last year, we developed drawings to renovate the project, the front of the building, and that would include removal of the damaged addition, and then bringing back the front entrance with the canopy and some metal panels, which would be very durable, and then some site work and an accessible parking space. So we had three bidders, the lowest bidder was JG Quorum Company out of Mount Airy, their base bid was nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. The bids were fairly close, within a couple of hundred, a hundred thousand dollars of each other. The, the biggest issue that we have now is that our original budget was around six hundred and seven thousand dollars when we estimated this project, so we're, we're much in excess of that. So what we wanted to do today was first discuss that to, bring this to you, this is a certified bid tab, and we have spoken to Mr. or JG Quorum Company. The next action of business that we're planning to do is to talk with the contractor and then offer some value engineering items that could hopefully bring the cost lower, closer to what we estimated. However, I don't think we'll be able to save three hundred thousand dollars out of the project without tremendous cuts to the project. So right now, I would love to hear any input from the commissioners or from the town, I'm sorry, of the county, and to make sure that I'm, I'm going in the right direction to proceed with the project, or to, to step back and to look at different alternatives that we may be able to successfully price with, with the lowest, apparent low bidder.
Questions?
Questions, but I mean, it sounds like value engineering is, took a conversation there is like the next best step to see what that might produce, and then...
Yeah, unfortunately, we have seen a tremendous increase in, in the bidding climate right now. We are real, we were very lucky to get three bidders for lots of reasons, we've had projects bid recently where one or two bidders would show up, and we'd have to rebid the process. We have seen about a forty-two percent increase, and unfortunately, with labor and material issues and supply chain issues, which I know everyone's tired of hearing, but that's, that's unfortunate, the reality we're facing, we never like to miss a budget this much, you know, we, we thought we had a project that we could get in that, that amount, but there are some opportunities that we can go to and, and look at, and I won't go through every single one of them right now, but I'll be glad to send that to you guys. every single one of them right now, but I'll be glad to send that to you guys. And then, Mr., I can't remember the project manager's name, but J.G. Quorum's company is actively looking at that also, because they are committed to the project if, in, in whatever form it comes out. So we've got some time before we need to go to contract, or before we need to make a decision, that we can talk with them. And I believe the bid stipulation is that they hold their price for 30 days. We'll be working on that to be sure that we have some type of resolution between now and the 10th of December, which could be the 30 days, or right at 30 days, so.
Any other questions?
Does Michael have a comment, or?
I, I just, I would say that obviously the bids have surprised us all. I believe that's a fair statement. Do think over the next couple of weeks, because if I'm hearing correctly, bids are hell for 30 days, which would require this to come back at your first meeting in December to, to consider awarding. So over the next couple of weeks, I would think that county staff, R and D, contractor, et cetera, will, will have some discussions about the possibilities of omitting or reducing the cost by some mechanism, and then bring that back at your December meeting, to, fair statement.
Exactly. That would be our, our suggested path as to, to negotiate or to value engineer the project with the contractor, with your, with your approval, and with also your participation.
When would the project get started?
Typically, right now, with a lot of the issues with looking for materials to be delivered, what we like to try to do is delay the start until at least 30 to 45 days after the contract's written before they get on site. Now, that could change with the contractor. He may want, or they may want to occupy the site quicker if they've already done their homework, and as far as they know when the materials could be delivered. But we were anticipating, if the bids were in budget, we were anticipating it would start sometime first of the year. So it may slide into the end of January or sometime in February to, to start, is the idea. And we have a 210-day calendar day duration, so that would put that sometime about, I'd say, the end of October, and that, and I'm just guessing right now for completion. And again, that's, we thought that's a generous duration. We thought that this project could be achieved much quicker. However, we didn't want to hogtie the contractor, so to speak, to be sure that they could get it done in that amount of time.
It is. John?
Reliance for weather.
So the 210 days that we have, have we already built in some, some weather issues with that? We think it could be done in less than 210 days. I think 210 is about 10 months. We've, we were thinking it would be a seven and a half to eight-month project, so we've got some time built in for both some middles, material delays, and also weather, so. But it's a great question, and I appreciate that.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. And sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but we certainly will work with you to make sure that we achieve a project that the county can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Long Library Report, Joan Scherle and Bobby Fender.
If you don't know me, I'm Bobby Fender. I'm the chairman of the local library advisory board. Been, been honored and privileged to work with each and every one of, of you all on this board. Appreciate all your continued efforts. Certainly appreciate the efforts, not only of this board, but also the county staff as well, because I'm, I've, I've gotten a firsthand look into the bipartisan, long hours, negotiating back and forth, all the work that takes place to bring forth this kind of platform and meeting here. People in the county, they don't, I don't think most people have that insight at how much effort and work goes into the budgeting and the planning for the county. So certainly appreciate everyone's efforts. Appreciate the opportunity to this one to speak to you on behalf of the library. Library, of course, is a true community service and place of being. It is open to all people, regardless of gender, race, or age. And it's good to have this platform for a moment of opportunity to present to you all what your efforts and funding of the library is doing for, for your community and for the county. Got some numbers to throw out, but I'll tell you a little bit about my last visit. A couple of weeks ago, I was up there, went by and saw Debbie Brewer, our head librarian, and I was there for less than an hour, and we were back in her office space, which had a, kind of a limited vantage point. But during that time, I saw 23 patrons, who ranged from two small children to some folks that were probably more advanced in age citizens, try to be nice about that, and some special needs folks. Saw four people using the public computers, multiple checkouts, and, and one of the employees, Doug, helped many people that, out of that 23 number, with either those checkouts or answering questions or making copies. And that was in less than an hour, in the middle of the week. Give you a little bit of feedback on what your funding has done in the past, and this, this data is from our 21, 22 fiscal year. And so we had library visitors, those coming into the library, 16,632, which is up 21% from the beginning of the pandemic, some of the 2020 numbers in there, but up 21% in library visits. A similar number, but totally different track, completely different, was the number of attendees to library-sponsored programs, another 16,692 people. Were over 2,100 usages of the public computers there, up 18% from the prior fiscal year. In a combined 19,059 times, a patron was assisted by library staff for reference or technology help that they had time to mark down on their sheet. I truly suspect that that number's even higher than that. And then, of course, the normal operations of the library, what, where everyone's mind tends to go when you say library is the circulations. That's the checking out of books, audios, DVDs, and even Wi-Fi hotspots. A whopping 28,689 circulations for that fiscal year. How do we do that much as a library? Well, again, it's the continued support from the county and the town and their funding efforts, and we also have 40% of the county's population that are cardholders to the library. So anybody that ever wonders, you know, we're, we're hit up there at the BDC and things, but got a lot of support from the county and a lot of participation, a lot of services that we provide. Look forward to coming back to you all again later with, with the current fiscal year's numbers, again later. Mark, Bill, appreciate your all's efforts. Got to know both of you fairly well, working through the library and through this, but I've got to know the rest of you, from Bobby, Michelle, and John. Michael, it's, it's been a real pleasure working with everyone, and it's amazing to see that kind of effort and cooperation. Certainly appreciate you all tremendously. Mark gonna miss you, Bill gonna miss you. I'll see you tonight, hope. We got, we got another meeting tonight, another community type, type deal going on. But again, just, just to wrap it up, the county continues to provide a wide range of variety of services and programs, workshops, research, entertainment, student services, and education. And to talk a little more about that, I'd like to introduce our head librarian, Debbie Brewer, to speak a little on, on that part.
I was trying to get out of speaking, but they wouldn't let me, so here I am. Okay. I just wanted to talk about some of the things that's going on at the library right now, but before I do that, I do want to thank you all from, personally from us at the library for your continued support. Without that support, we could not do what we do, and so you can pat yourself on the back for that, so. I just want to give you a few of the current events that we've got going on right now. Our in-house storytime, we have on Mondays at 10:30, and we've served anywhere from 30 people at a, at a program till two or three, depending on where everybody's at at the time. We have three virtual storytimes that we share weekly, and I encourage you to go onto our library YouTube page. You can see some of the things that we share. We have three virtual storytimes each week. Library Storytime, we have a collaboration with Carmen Long of the Extension Service and Sherry Cordell of the Second Harvest Food Closet, and they do a storytime cooks or have been each month for the kids. And then we have visiting tellers, which includes different people from the community. If any of you all would like to be a visiting teller, just let us know at the library. We're always looking for someone to come and do that. Carolyn goes out weekly to all daycares and school PKs, so we've got, you know, she's going out to share stories and to take books out and share stories with the kids. In collaboration with App State, we have two Tai Chi classes weekly for our seniors. It's a series, we had 20 seniors who signed up for that class. Think we've lost a couple of them, but they are still involved, a lot of them. And we recently, again with App State, did an Aging Well program, where they, we actually did a, a thing to test them and to see how, how they're aging, you know, collab, the different things that they tested on. Our staff is involved with the Allegheny Task Force, where we, it's a collaboration of different agencies to provide services for the youth and take care of the youth of our community. For the third year, we are providing tutoring for students that are referred by their teachers, and we have volunteer tutors that are work in the libraries. The contact person, we've, we've actually set it up, and we have tutors that are willing to do that. And we're always looking for math tutors. That's the biggest thing, and I'm finding out adults don't want to do the math tutoring, I can tell you. But I've actually reached out to Beta Club, and last year, we had a couple of Beta Club students who helped us with that. We were able to put together a plan to collect school supplies for the school this year, and I think it took five, took me five trips to get those up to the, the Board of Education. So we had a lot of wonderful community residents who contributed to that. We will be doing Battle of the Books, an elementary Battle of the Books competitions in the spring for the schools. We do that, we've been doing that each year. I'm hoping this year we can have it in-house. We've been doing it virtually, using Smartboard and doing it that way, but I hope, hopefully this year, we'll be able to bring the students back into the library. And we'll soon be off, providing some free community computer classes and have some regular set dates to help people with local and, and historical research for our community. Doug's our local historian, and, and he's very knowledgeable about that, so we have a lot of people that come in and ask questions, and he, we're going to set up that time so he can be available. And the last thing I want to share with you, we have Happy Holidays celebration on December the 12th, and each one of you will receive a special invitation to join us and come out and get some refreshments. We have Santa and Mrs. Claus, and this is just sort of our thank you to our community for their support during, during the year. And now I want to introduce our person who leads all of our 13 libraries, and we're so pleased to introduce Joan Scherle to share with you.
Great staff and this wonderful board, too. Allegheny County has a special place in all of our hearts. This is just a quick summary of regional events for the past year that I think dovetail with what Debbie and Bobby said, and they're a hard act to follow, but I just wanted to point out inside, if you just open the little flyer under our numbers, and this is just, Bobby filled you in on the Allegheny numbers, which are going up, and it pretty well mirrors what's happening on our whole region here, which is wonderful to see in terms of what's happening with libraries. Library visits region-wide were up 32%, and the e-resources were up also 32%. Programs, people are coming back to their libraries with doors open, and there's 69% increase there, and the attendance is up 90%. The Wi-Fi usage, free Wi-Fi and free public computers are holding strong and in fact increasing, so, you know, we feel like it's, it's just only up from here, so we're looking forward to that. Just wanted to mention to you as a, as a friendly reminder, on the right of that is the funding model, and I know we've had a chance this year to talk to several of you about how this thing works a little bit, because of course, the heart is right here in Allegheny County, but we're very glad that Allegheny County is part of the Northwestern Regional Library that includes Surrey, Stokes, and Yacken Counties. The region has been around for over 60 years, and the reason it exists through the state is to maximize both resources and funding, and we're really glad to keep that going and looking forward to the future. So that is, again, the funding of how, how it all works. None of the funding from Allegheny County funds the region office. It all stays right here in Allegheny County, okay? On the left-hand side, there are just some more of the services that are offered. Libraries are certainly more than books now. We have NC Live databases that are just amazing, ancestry.com for eugeneologists, of course, the summer learning program that's famous all over for serving kids and their families. The little green box is just an update, and we appreciate your support of funding. The staff salary increases this past year for the pay plan. We know it's been a challenge with so much that you've been working with. We do appreciate that happening. We know that the heart of the library is the staff, along with the people who come in. So thank you all. We are very glad that as of this year, all of our staff, all over, are on year three of the salary study, and we hope that Allegheny staff will be able to join next year. So that's just a little information about what's, what's gone on this past year. I did want to mention just some other region-wide activities, because Debbie told you about what's going on locally. We are able to get grants through the regional system and support through the state library for things that I think help all libraries, and we're very glad to be able to offer those. We try to work really closely together to maximize the use of that. Debbie is very involved in a lot that's going on, and it just, it just raises the bar for everybody. This year, we were able to get a grant to purchase hotspots to check out and Chromebooks, because we know everyone does not have those at home, and since we've had them, they have been used a lot, and I think Debbie can attest to that. We know that everyone doesn't have hotspots. We know everybody doesn't really know how to use them, so they are used heavily, and we're really glad to do that through grants. We also have Student Access, which is wonderful. That's a statewide program, and that means that all students, just with their student ID, because they all have them, or their lunch number, as they call them, can access the databases and every, most of the resources available through the library just with that ID, because we know everyone doesn't have a library card. We want everybody to. We know about 40% of the population here does, and our goal is 100%, but we want to make sure that those resources are accessible. We really appreciate Missy Weaver with Allegheny County Schools to make it all possible, to get the database together with her staff and get it to the state library, so that's in, in existence right now. Debbie had asked me if I'd mentioned Quiz Bowl, too, and this is an event every year that's sponsored region-wide. It's a great competition with kids, kind of like a little college bowl for high school kids. It's fun to watch them. The reason we keep doing it is because they want to do it, and it helps, it helps them just with information and that type of thing, but also kind of, you can see them working together as a team, and the Allegheny High School has always had a very, very good team, so we're looking forward to that. I just want to thank all of you. This is a week of Thanksgiving. We are grateful for all of you, for what you've done in the past, and looking forward to seeing all of you in the future and continue to work with you. If you have any questions ever, or comments, or suggestions, please let us know. We're here to serve the public as well, always. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Very good presentation, and our library is, is a well-run organization over there. They've got great numbers to, to prove it. You've got great assets, you sure do. Thank all of you for the job you do.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next on the agenda, storm-ready certification. Phil, high sell.
Mr. Daniel wrote. I'm gonna jump in front of Phil. I'm gonna take this opportunity to introduce you to my friend here. My function today is not to take up much of your time, but to be, to be the host, I suppose. So Phil's been a good friend of mine personally. There aren't many people that have my personal cell phone number, but he's one of them. But not only has he been a friend to me, he's also been a friend in Allegheny County. When the weather outside is frightful, if I'm on the phone with somebody, or if I'm sending information out to you guys, a lot of times that information... information out to you guys, a lot of times that information's coming from this guy standing behind me right here. So without further ado, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Phil Heissel, Warning Coordination Re-urologist with National Weather Service in Blacksburg. And if any of you'd like to complain about the forecast, this is your opportunity.
Good morning, everyone. And thank you so much for the kind words, Daniel. I sincerely appreciate it. And likewise, many people do not have my cellphone number, but Daniel has mine and it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for inviting the National Weather Service to be at today's meeting, celebrating Allegheny County that's now a community that's better equipped to deal with significant weather events. And I'd just like to take a couple of minutes of your time to talk about the Storm Ready Program and recognize those, specifically Daniel, who helped make Allegheny County a storm-ready community. So what is Storm Ready? Storm Ready is a voluntary National Weather Service program designed to create better schools, businesses, and communities like Allegheny County through partnerships between local National Weather Service offices and state and local emergency management. The Storm Ready Program recognizes those communities that take a proactive approach in improving their hazardous weather operations and actively take part and promote severe weather preparedness activities. And Daniel has certainly done that. The National Weather Service developed the Storm Ready Program in 1999 to help communities implement procedures to reduce the potential for disastrous weather consequences. Now specifically for Allegheny County to be recognized as storm-ready, they had to meet several requirements. Some of those requirements include having a location that monitors weather conditions 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Having multiple ways to receive our life-saving warnings and multiple ways to deliver those warnings to public safety officials and to the community. They had to have a system that monitors local weather conditions and they had to promote public readiness through local seminars, whether they're virtual or in-person. They also had to develop a formal hazardous weather operations plan that addressed all of the potential hazards that could impact Allegheny County. And the plan that Daniel showed was incredibly robust and one of the most impressive plans that we have seen. They also had to participate in several drills. Because Allegheny County not only met, but exceeded all of these requirements, the North Carolina Storm Ready Advisory Board approved Allegheny County as a storm-ready community on September 22nd of this year. So what does this mean? What benefits does Storm Ready bring to Allegheny County? Well, being a storm-ready community has the opportunity for you to apply for community rating system points that could potentially lower flood insurance rates. It improves the timeliness and effectiveness of our severe weather warnings. It provides an image incentive for your community. It helps your community be prepared for other emergencies. But perhaps most importantly, Storm Ready can save lives. Storm-ready communities are better prepared to save lives from the onslaught of severe weather through advanced planning, education, and awareness. So please accept my most sincere congratulations for Allegheny County receiving this recognition. And I just want to say on a personal note, what a tremendous privilege and honor it has been to work with Daniel through this process. Everything we asked him to do, whether it was on the application or extra requirements, he was always willing to do, whether it's travel up to our office to meet our forecasters and see our operations and hear how we can serve him and the county better. Whether it was signing up to be a Weather Ready Nation Ambassador, to be a force multiplier, to send weather safety information out to the community, he was always very willing and helpful and available to do that and I sincerely appreciate that. And at this time, I'd like to present Daniel with an official Storm Ready sign and certificate. You can put the sign anywhere you like in the county, Daniel.
How about I tailgate in my pickup?
It's up to you. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Daniel, for all you've done. You've been very instrumental. Thank you.
Where are you going to post that?
I don't know. I've got to talk to the boss and see where he'll let me put it. That's my pickup truck.
That would look good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mobile storm ready.
Next up, Facilities Update. Public Works Director, Mr. Dave Spicer.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. I thank you for the opportunity to come and give you a report. We have been working on the administration building for some time now. Some of it was earthquakes, some of it other things that needed to be done. We have received the final shipment for the flooring that will go down here in this lower level. Hopefully, we'll start that completion of that after Thanksgiving. So we're going to take care of that. If you had noticed throughout the building, some of the lights, especially some of the emergency lights, they have been sort of yellow in the middle of them. We have been working with CD Electric and the manufacturer of those lights and the manufacturer have sent us, we just got that shipment in. So they've sent us lots for replacement that's under warranty. So we're going to begin work in this building to be replacing those light fixtures. So we look to start that, if not this week, the next week at the latest. Hopefully, within two to three weeks, we'll begin construction for the temporary tippin' floor at the transfer facility. That is one of those much-needed projects that we have taken under that we need to get completed. So hopefully, within the next two to three weeks, we'll begin that project. We had one load of cardboard recycle that we have taken down, that 2.23 tons. There's another one, I think, that is scheduled to go down today. So we've been having plenty of cardboard. The co-mingle, we've had two loads totaling seven tons. So people have picked up on recycling a little bit. That's being increased and I think us getting the word out, some things that we've done and the word of mouth, I think mostly with that, that the people are beginning to pick up on the recycling and we're accommodating the increase on that. I have begun the process of writing another grant for a second compactor. That compactor will be for cardboard. The way we do it now, it works, but it's not efficient. So we're going to work on getting another $30,000 grant to hopefully get a compactor and one more receiver for that. And maybe by next year, at this time, we'll be compacting cardboard instead of trying to push it in with machinery. We did not have any scrap metal that we have hauled. We've not accomplished that, but we do have some that we're going to haul. So we're going to clean off that floor so that when the temporary tippin' floor project begins, that it'll be clean and ready for them to begin. As some of you may know, we've been having some difficulties with the heating system at the courthouse. This, some of it has been alleviated. We have been working every day to try to get things accomplished in the heating system to make sure that the courthouse has the proper heat in that facility. They did have to move court this past week on Friday. They had court Friday. They did have to use the annex building for that, which was there and ready and available. So that was okay. We had it going and had heat in the courtroom on Friday, but the memos for all the emails went out on Thursday. They had to be prepared. So that was already too far gone for us to have that all fixed. But some of the, they're actually Stanley Heating and Air is there now, working on one of the pumps. So we've been having a little bit of difficulty getting parts in in a timely manner, but most of them have come on in pretty good. So one thing always calls for something else. And we've been eliminating and fixing and doing, we had problems with the fire alarm. That was just a coincidence, unfortunately, which had the thermostat in the courtroom killed. So we didn't have a thermostat in the courtroom, so we couldn't have heat. So once we got the other things fixed and Johnson Controls came and replaced the control board and the head, the smoke head for the duct detector at the courthouse, then now we're back up and going. So those things, it wasn't a coincidence, it just happened at the same time. So we're working to alleviate and fix all those problems and limp that thing by till we can get something else going. 90 South Main, we've already discussed that this morning. We're looking forward to that project, not only beginning, but ending. That's been one of those things that's kind of took us a little while. At the EMS base right now, all of our ambulances is up and running. So we don't have any anywhere. We're not waiting on any parts. The last time I reported to you about the EMS was that we was waiting on parts. Those have been fixed and they're back all going. All four ambulances is up and going. So we're good on that. As far as animal control goes, this past time, we've had 60 calls in 139 hours. We've assisted the sheriff's department, three of the calls. Dogs and livestock was one. We've done 22 well checks. We've went and picked up two dogs, one dog and one cat. We've had 13 animals running at large. We've had two attacks and that's not attacks on people, attacks on other animals. We've had eight bites and eight animals quarantined. We've also set out nine traps, which yielded nine different animals, dogs and cats alike. So with that, we have been very busy. So everything else is pretty good and looking forward to hopefully a good winter and we'll try to keep things running along as smooth as we can.
Questions?
See impact to the fuel cost on your operations over at the transfer station?
Well, it's in the budget. It's, right now, it's running along pretty good, but yeah, it's going to bust the budget probably. We've been at times paying over $5 a gallon for off-road diesel. Just depends upon when and that setup to be brought in and fielded on a regular basis. So it just depends upon the price the day they come. We've paid $4.98 and we've paid $5.08. So it's fluctuating right there around $5 a gallon to keep our equipment running at the transfer facility. Now, as far as the roll-off truck, we put 100 gallons, a little over 100 gallons in it the other day, which at $5.29 a gallon, that's $529. So that's, but we, hopefully, by us selling the scrap metal, that we're going to be able to maintain on that one. So hopefully, it'll be better than breaking even. I'm hoping it stays in the blue instead of the red.
Do you use any kerosene?
We do not use kerosene.
Okay. You said you've got 139 hours under animal control. So you're basically losing an employee for animal control for 139 hours a month.
That's correct.
Is that putting you behind on your repair orders?
Well, right now, we're able to keep up. But it takes a lot out of those folks to keep up. But right now, we're keeping up. So we're able to fix those things still yet in a timely manner and hopefully keep everybody going and doing what needs to be done. But I mean, we're just, we're doing what we have to do to keep everything going along.
Which vehicle are you using for animal control now?
We have a Ford F-150 with a camper shell that has the dog box in the back of it. So that's pretty much all it's used for.
What's your mileage?
Don't have an exact mileage number. We kind of, we go all over the county and in the ordinance, it says that we need to patrol and look for animals that do not have rabies vaccinations and rabies tags. I've not been doing a lot of that lately, to be honest with you, trying to cut the cost down on fuel consumption and man hours. But I've not been just riding the roads, just looking for animals to arrest and put in the dog pound. So I know we need to do that and that is in the ordinance, but unfortunately, right now, we're trying to maintain a budget. We do go every time that someone calls, every complaint is investigated, every well check is sought after and looked back in on. We make sure that we revisit these things. You know, we've not had so much on vicious animals lately, but it has been a lot of other things worse. You know, the economy is not what it was and unfortunately, neither is animal care. So we're looking, but right now, we're able to maintain, we're able to do. And you know, we go all the way to Flint Hill and we've been to Flint Hill several times and everybody knows Flint Hill's almost in Ash County. So we've been up there like four or five times in the last week. So that's a good distance from town. But we go and we do what needs to be done.
One last question. It slipped my mind. So apparently, it wasn't that important.
Think about it.
Yeah, probably tomorrow.
It's okay. You just called me.
Thank you. On my weekly trips to the transfer station, the other day, there was a tremendous amount of cardboard, these big, big boxes, I think they put pumpkins in or whatever, that just went straight into the dumpster and wasn't recycled. Is there any way that we can contact these businesses and ask them to try to, at least try to let us recycle that cardboard? I mean, there was, I would say, a good dump truck load at one time.
Yes, sir. We can do that. We can, and you know, we know what businesses brings it in. So yeah, that can be accomplished. Yes, sir.
Just a quick question for the public who needs access to animal control. What is the best number or method for them to contact?
The number that we use for the daytime is the transfer facility because about 90% of the time, unless there's something going on, someone is in the scale house that can answer the phone. So we use the transfer facility phone number for daytime and we use dispatch for the evening and nighttime and after hours on weekends. So once they contact either one of those two numbers, and both of those are on our website for that to contact animal control, and they can, they have our cellphone number, well, all of us' numbers. So they can get a hold of, if one line's busy, they can call another and accomplish that.
Dispatch, you're talking about their landline number in lieu of the 911?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I believe it's 4455. Yeah. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it be better to use the 911 number all of the time? Because we get credit for every 911 call is used, plus that dispatcher could be sure the information is relayed. I think they record all the information also.
Yes, sir. I do think that's correct and I think the 4455 number is recorded also. However, it's not counted as a 911 call. But if that's something that needs to take place, then if that's what the consensus is, then we can change that on our website. Our big reason not to was that we didn't want to tie up the 911 line for somebody's, "My cat has escaped and I need to help getting it up and someone will be dying of a heart attack." I'd rather, I'd rather continue as we are, if that's okay.
Any other questions? Appreciate that report, Dave. Thanks for the job you do. Financial update, Ms. April Ham, Finance Officer.
I have to adjust the mic. So I need to hand out a report for today. Your finance report this morning is just a snapshot of what's going on for this fiscal year. We do have the draft audit. County Manager and I are going over that, the numbers, to make sure we don't have anything that we have any more questions about. But that will be reported to you during the daytime meeting next month. Year-to-date revenue, $10,481,960. Just a reminder, a lot of the tax revenue has come in for the year. Year-to-date expenditures, $7,181,618. That represents 39% of our expenditures and 57% of our revenues. And then the approved budget for this fiscal year was $18,412,892. And we're 38% into And we're 38% into that fiscal year for the budget. Bank balance as of today, $19,745,211.45. And then I have the bank balance for a year ago, $14,443,52. And then two years ago, $9,668,940.17. Our net financials for this fiscal year, taking into consideration the revenue and the expenditures, is $3,342,000 as of today. Answer any questions about this fiscal year? All right. I do have a sales tax report for you also on the second page. Year-to-date, year-to-date sales tax that we have received, $359,177.83. This is the local option sales tax. I just want to clarify that. A year ago, $275,750.65. So it is running ahead about $75,000, $80,000 as compared to a year ago.
Comments?
I just think the comments, you just look at the numbers and compare them like we were talking earlier back in 2020. Look at those numbers, look at our numbers today. You know, the whole team, the whole financial team, commissioners, and the, like I keep saying, the people of the county bought into that, that we needed to correct our financial situation. And I thank all the department heads and all the agencies out in the county, you know, that recognized that trouble that we were in. But it took the leadership, you know, in this building to turn these numbers around. And it, talking earlier today about it being a great job, it's a miracle, I think, that we've come this far.
In three years' time.
And I think at our mid-month meeting next, in December, we're going to have our audit report, or maybe the first meeting.
It will be the second meeting in December. It'll actually be the day meeting. We do have it on the schedule with True. Like I said, we do have a draft, and we're going through that right now. And I did send some information out last week, just draft information. Just want to clarify and make sure everybody understands that.
Any other questions? Thank you, April.
Thank you, and I will echo your sentiment that, you know, everybody bought into this. When Michael started with us, you know, it was a, we got a buckle down, and we've all got to do this. And the department heads bought in, as you said. And I appreciate Bill's leadership and being with us on the budget committee with the finances. I think his first year being on it was, maybe not, but that was a real eye-opener for me, learning that process and going through the finances one by one. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate Mark, too. I just want to say thank you for the working relationship and good luck to you guys.
Same here. The leadership started with the county manager over there with the budget, and the support came from the board and the budget committee. And he led the direction for us to accomplish what's been accomplished. I think that's a fair statement. The board supported all that. Moving on down to general business, Duncan Recreational Property, Commissioner Bobby Irwin.
Yeah, we're on the topic of the Duncan swimming pool at the high school. And we've been going through a process for the last several months after our last, after the earthquake, and then we had the engineers study the swimming pool in those facilities. And we've been talking to the school system about what to do with that piece of property. It's, I think it's a shade under four acres. And I think Heather has some comments about the qualifications and what we would have to do with that piece of land to turn it over to the high school. Heather?
Because of the type of grant that we received from the state for that, when, I think there were upgrades that were made to the pool, and that was about 2005. We're under that grant for 25 years. So we have to maintain that property for public use and access, which is what the grant was for, for the pool. So it doesn't have to be used for a pool. I've already talked to the state about that, and we can change the use of the property. That is okay. It just has to be approved by the state, NC Parks. And the way that we start with that is that we have a plan for what the property is going to be used for, and that there be a recommendation from the board that you approve that use to begin with. I would take this back to that grant department, give them an idea of what we're thinking. And then there has to be a public comment on that change in use before we actually apply to the state for the change. Once that 25 years is up, we don't, we don't have to comply with any of the terms of that grant that we received. So, you know, the use could change after a time, but, you know, at this point, we're still in it. I think we're still in it. Can't remember the exact dates for when the grant was given and then exactly when it would end. But it's sometime closer to, I think, 2026, 27-ish. So we still have to have a plan that the public could use this property for. I think we had discussed, you know, even with the use being changed for the school system, I think we still have to have some accessibility for the public. So we've talked about that a bit, and, you know, we may modify this plan depending on what the state requires us to do. However, at this point, the next step would be the board determining that you want to pursue this change of use and the recommendations from the school. And then we'll go from there as to what we're required to do from NC Parks.
Also, I think with the, with the recent grant that the high school received, $47 million, this comes at an opportune time for the county and the school system to work together to better use that piece of property. And I think there's creative ways that the, that the old recreation grant can be approved by the state, whether it be pickleball court, or whether it be a picnic area. There's different things that can be done. And I would fully recommend, Michelle's been in on this, on the recreation committee end of it. This is not to say that we're not going to have a swimming pool in Allegheny County, because we are working very, very hard on, in the near future of constructing a new swimming pool. So I would recommend, and I would ask Michelle if she has any comments about the program, but I would also recommend this board proceed with Heather's timeline.
Yes, and the school system's use of this property involves an indoor facility for the girls' softball. So it would be a heating facility and changing areas, restrooms for the area up there. So similar to what the boys' baseball has. Saves the county money on demolition.
Need to, want to go with a motion to turn this over to the school?
I'd make that motion.
Make that motion. Got a motion second. Any questions?
I don't think you're making a motion to turn it over to the school, yet. I just want to clarify that. Approving the process-
Strictly informative.
I would rescind my motion and use as a timeline with Heather to proceed.
Well, it would be that you approve the use, and there may be some other minor adjustments that would go along with this, depending on what NC Parks recommends or requires of us. But for now, you're approving this plan, subject to some modifications.
Motion is second. The state's got the final. Say so, like you said. So, Mark?
So just for clarification, this is going to then proceed for the grant issuers to review the plan and make sure it falls within, that we're all good with that. Is there a, is there a financial component to doing this of any kind?
Not from NC Parks, from their standpoint, no.
But locally, between us and the school, or anything at all? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Got a motion is second. Any further discussion?
Only comment is that no prior discussion, no workshops, all of a sudden, this just pops out of the air.
We'll give it to the school.
I'm going to say that, just pop out of the air, Bobby and I have been meeting on this with school, with numerous entities that have to deal with this as part of the Recreation Commission. And as members of the Recreation Board, we are, we are looking at an opportunity to rid ourselves of this demolition, of this damage beyond repair property. The school would be able to have a good use for this facility, as well as parking for their new facility. And, you know, quite frankly, that area is just not suitable with the new school going in to have the swimming pool on that location. So it looks to me, and it looks to Bobby, as being a win-win situation for both.
Good information. It'd been nice to have it before we were going to vote on it.
I think the appropriate place for that land to go is the school, if the county's going to give it up. I think it's very much needed at the school to, there's three or four acres there, and that would work in well with the school system up there. Got a motion is second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Hello? Thank you. The next resolution, Building Reuse Grant. Mr. Brian Edwards.
Good morning. I was here at your last meeting and discussed a project, building, existing building category, building reuse. NAPCO is expanding on their local operations up there. This grant has no tie to the new construction. This grant is based on internal modifications to the existing building. And so they are eligible for a grant up to $500,000. Currently, it appears that the NAPCO project is going to be more in the range of $275,000 to $300,000. So I've been working with Bill Schlegel from the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina to the Department of Commerce, and also with Phil True from High Country Council of Governments. He's assisting with the application preparation. We submitted last week, on Friday afternoon, the draft of that back to Bill at the Economic Development Partnership. So that is still in process, but it's important that we approve this resolution because there is a deadline that the Economic Development Partnership has to satisfy. And if this is successful, the award would be in early January. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think the question before you is to approve this resolution so we can continue on this process.
Questions?
Questions, I would make that motion.
Second.
Resolution to approve.
Motion, John, second. Resolution to approve. Mark?
Just a quick question on the cash, 5% cash match. Where is that? Is that a county component?
Yes, it is. That's county.
Based on the number you think that it's going to be at, that's like 13, 750?
Yeah, that's correct. However, we're asking for the match to, if we can come up with additional improvements within that building, the maximum would be $500,000 grant, and it could be $25,000 match. It looks like it's going to be more in the $275,000 to $300,000. There's, with this also, there is a second document, just to be sure we've covered all the... It's called the Local Government Certification, and that goes along with the, that's, the chairman would sign the Local Government Certification.
I think we need to get behind that and make that happen. We got a motion is second. No further discussion. We'll call for a vote. All in favor? Five o.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Chairman, may I just clarify?
Yes, sir.
As I understand it, and Brian, please correct me, but the matching funds are not a component in the current budget. It would be something that would be planned for in a future budget.
Thank you. That clarification. Dave Marklees, Mr. Drew Todd, Assistant Manager.
Heather, obviously, you've read this document, and I think we go through this every time. There should be a line on here for you to sign off on, that you've read the document and that you approve of it.
Sure, and we can add that.
Thank you.
Questions? Will you entertain a motion?
Motion to approve with the requested addition.
Got a motion here is second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five o. Moving on to town, delinquent tax collection. County manager, Mr. Michael Carter.
Chairman, members of the board, on pages 11 and 12 in your agenda, you have a draft, I suppose, of a written form for an agreement between the town and county on the delinquent taxes. And what I'll say is the county is obligated by statute to perform these duties regardless. But we wanted to put something in writing so that we could identify it and have it on file. So members of the team here at the county and members of the town have come up with this agreement. As to Commissioner Bobby Irwin, this one does not have that signatory page. Since it's a joint agreement from both the county and town, I'll go ahead and just suggest we put attorney sign-offs on both of those, or for both of those entities. But I don't know if Heather has any comments about the agreement itself. Just put it in the writing, what we already have to do.
We did go over it, and there was some back and forth, and Rita had some questions about a few things. And so we had discussed a couple of things out of it and thought maybe some of the language needed to be changed. And I think it's been revised, so I think with everybody's, as far as I know, in regards to moving forward with it.
Everybody being?
So Rita, because our conversation was between Michael, Rita, myself, and I haven't been involved with the town and them looking at it and reviewing it and making any suggestions either. But was there anybody else on that?
April and Drew were the other two from the county, and then we've been dealing with the town manager and his staff to come up.
Everybody's aware. Your motion? Excuse me, John?
I've got a question. Are we going to be given any reimbursement for the hours that we are going to put in on this? Because the other thing that concerns me, Grandma's place was foreclosed on by the county, and they sold it. Now, by statute, we've got to do this. I understand that. But the county's going to get a black eye whenever we basically take property and sell ground. county's going to get a black eye whenever we basically take property and sell Grandma's house, because somebody didn't pay taxes. Now, wanted to take, collect their own taxes, well, I guess we get the bad, they get the good?
They get it going forward, that this is for the previous year. But you're correct in what you're saying. It's just unfortunate that, up until the time that they decided to operate their own collections, we are the responsible entity for that.
How far will that go back?
Eleven to 21, is what this agreement's for.
So, we're just looking at one year. Ten years, that's what I thought. It'd be ten years. Okay.
Motion.
Hey, Grandma's taxes. Most, I believe the motion was made, I'll second.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor? Five vote. Next up, Slough Springs Rescue Squad Funding Request. Morgan Reed. That ain't Morgan.
Chairman, you guys will have to deal with me. My name is Jason Decker. I'm the EMS and Rescue Chief, for Laurel Springs Fire Department. I come to you today to ask for some funding for some items that we are needing. We have a lot of expirations on non-durable medical supplies, that we need to replace by the end of this month. And then we also have other items that will be expiring in the next couple of months to come. The other two line items you will see on there, is a stair chair, and that is a portion of the cost of the stair chair. And the reason we're asking for this is, sometimes, we need to move the patient prior to a stair chair getting to us. In other words, from EMS or rescue coming out of Sparta, we have to get this patient moved, and we don't have this. So, for the safety of the patients, and the safety of us, instead of using the old archaic ways that we used to do things, we request some funding. Ashley is the cardiac monitor. Same thing. Sometimes we need to pace, we need to do other things to help our patients, before those items get to us. The cardiac monitor, we are now using. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, and when you need it to work, it really does. And an AED cannot take the place of cardiac monitor. Those are the three items on there, and should cover us into...
My question B is, you guys serve Ash and Allegheny, has, have you been to Ash, or have they contributed to this project, or?
A, the portions that I came up with are basically, I think it was 40% actual cost is, I, and I base that off of the number of calls that we're operating for each side.
So, you prorated it?
Yes.
Okay.
Want me to go and come?
Budgeted.
Is, is this something that we can look at in the next budget, that we're starting in, into January, into February, that we can budget it into our next budget?
If we wait, the items that are expired, and that are expiring from now until January, we will be out those items, and they are life-saving items. We'll also be with a monitor that sometimes works, and sometimes doesn't, and we'll start.
And any of this be modified, any, to get what you need right away, versus what could be looked at in the next budget?
I think, right now... Go without the stair chair for now. I mean, we do have our carry methods to use, and we'll just try to be careful not to injure anybody. As far as the medical supplies, so we're looking at 1,000 a month. So, if we did 2,000 now, and then the rest, or 1,500 now, and then the rest after the first of the year, for budgeting, because that is for, and I did five months, because I thought our timeline was in a five-month, and that amount will, the prorated amount there, will cover us for the expired supplies, until, I believe, our new budget year starts July 1. Is that correct? And that would cover us. So, despite it says 1,000 a month, we could do probably 1,500 right now, from now till January, and then the rest of that balance somehow scattered out after January.
Have you talked to Ash County about any of these funds?
I have not been to Ash County for their portion of it yet, no.
Is, I'm just throwing this out as a question. Is there maybe a chance that, that, that you could meet with Michael Carter, and have some more specific figures, within the next couple of weeks? Is that something that would help either one of us? I just know that this money's not in this current budget. So, I'm just looking at different ways to, you know, to maybe fund part of it, and stretch part of it out. Ash County, maybe do the same thing. I, I just think there needs to be a little more conversation between you and the county manager. I mean, is that a possibility?
If Michael's willing to meet and has time. I, I don't know what his schedule is.
I, I certainly am willing to meet. I, I just, I don't know that, with the holidays and all that, I don't know that we can get it accomplished by your first meeting. But I would guarantee you, we could get it accomplished by your second meeting in December. Now, that, that doesn't remedy the fact that, some of what we're talking about, as I understand, it may expire.
Well, some of it is expired. It expired the end of last month, and a lot of other items are coming towards expiration at the end of this month.
I was just trying to look at some creative ways to...
I, I agree. I, not that I, I'm not saying that these, this request isn't substantial or valid. I'm just saying that, I think there needs to be a process onto detailing it, and figuring out where it may come from, because it indeed is not inside your current budget.
Any other survey questions? Don't have any money in your budget out of your fire tax lift, you can pull that out of, or part of it out of.
BBS, the fire tax stuff, or fire stuff.
We want to table this, for, give you time to see where the money's coming from, and revisit. And I understand the timeframe here.
Will that work?
I mean, the understanding that we will be out of those supplies, and, you know, as I explained, the, sometimes, sometimes it doesn't, and, you know, without the stair...
That was a contingency, to understand, at the present time.
A lot of, that right there is nearly $11,000, if, if you fund the full amount. There's a lot in that contingency, so.
Just thinking about the partial thing, I believe you said $1,500?
Yeah, for the medical supplies, would cover the items that are expiring now.
Give you guys time to see where the risks have come from.
I mean, I would tend to lean in and...
Your thoughts?
I hate for expire and be, you know, totally empty handed. I do, do something to, to bridge the gap until we can, but I do think, I do like the idea of sitting down, and, and looking at our budget a little closer, to kind of see, because just a, a reaction to, to draw this out of something, that, you know, there may be something else we can find. And as Bobby says, to, you know, sometimes you can get creative, but it takes, takes just a, sometimes it takes a little bit of time.
I think we can, we can identify $1,500 for, for this immediate need. I think we can do that today. But for the remaining needs, I think that would validate a meeting to allow for further, on both sides.
Pretty big's out, mid-month, December?
Mid-month, December, maybe, is what I would recommend.
Agreeable with you guys, that, that?
That'll, that'll work, because I do, I do understand what you're saying. And it is also urgent, so, if we can get together.
I'd make a motion, $1,500 from, I guess, contingency.
We'll need to withdraw the previous motion, before we make another motion under Robert's orders, Mr. Chairman.
Did the motion man go?
Motion, oh, you got one on the floor?
We got a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor.
Do we have a motion? Drew, you got it? You ain't got a motion, okay. Bobby?
No, I'll just say.
Okay, Mark made the motion.
Motion to appropriate $1,500 for the initial emergency needs.
I'll say.
Bobby's second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five vote.
Thank you.
That'll be back on the agenda for mid-December, to talk about the rest out after you.
Please plan on putting in your budget request, expiring things.
Will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate what you guys doing out there. Any surplus property? Drew Todd?
Accepting this, we will put it back on the tax rolls, correct?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve here, second.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Pose. Five vote. You voted for? Recreation line item transfer, Ms. April Hand.
Scott, one line item transfer for you this morning. This is for recreation. There was actually $12,000 received last year, from the Health Department, to buy recreational needs, due to supply-demand delays and things. They have just gotten the invoice for this in the past couple of weeks. So, this will come out of the unassigned fund balance that was budgeted for this year. That $12,000, what was not spent of it, is basically part of our fund balance, which is going to be represented from last year.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve, here, second.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, April. NC Agenda, Tax Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions on the consent agenda, and if my fellow commissioners have no questions, I will move that we accept.
Okay.
Motion second, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five vote.
Saved.
Thank you. Any manager comments?
I didn't have an opportunity to look out in the audience much today, but I have now. And I, I see one of our good friends sitting out here, Mr. Dana Phillips, and certainly appreciate him being here. Now, we don't appreciate everyone, but I, I wanted to ask the board if, if it was okay. If maybe Dana puts you on the spot, not that you're ever on the spot, but maybe to come up and say a few words about where we are, or where we been. We had a, we had an earlier conversation with Mr. Daniel about 90 South Main, that you will be a part of as well. So, just shining the light on you for a minute.
Mr. Carter? Good to see everybody. Appreciate it. Sorry I was a few minutes late, but came in this morning. So, kind of give you a quick little update, I guess, where we're at on our earthquake recovery program right now. I actually had the opportunity to meet with Chairman Osborne and Brian a couple of weeks ago, and we, we gave a little update on some things. But we are, to say we're in the short road is a little bit of an understatement. We are. We're wrapping a lot of things up. That still means we've got a lot of work still going on out there. We still got projects going on, but in the most part, we're really starting to ramp down the program, still taking care of a lot of things. We, when it's all said and done, it looks like we're going to have close to $12 million just spent in individual assistance. 12 million in individual assistance, that's going directly to homeowners impacted. Right now, we're just under about 10 million spent, and I was working on some budget reallocations, and we're looking at, at just moving that up to about 12 million, just for residential recovery. When you add in what we're doing with some of our larger grant projects, we've got a larger one with the town, we're, we're looking at close to 19 million, just in our residential and our big projects. We're looking forward to working with the county. Look forward to maybe chatting with you guys, and David here in a little bit, to see what we can do to, to help out with 90 South Main, but we're, we're excited about that. We know there's a little bit of a challenge there. Bid day's always a little bit, a little bit of a challenge. You never know what you're going to get, but we're excited about seeing what we can do to help with that project as well. The partnership has been great, and even though we say we're ramping down stuff, our office is still here. We're not going anywhere until we're done. We're still going to have the office full-time here in Sparta. I'm up here at least every other week. I try to come by every week if I can, but a lot of times, it's, it's pretty much every other week right now. We still have a couple of rebuilds going on, too. Couple of new homes that are going to be built and replaced here in the county soon, and I'll share some more information on that, as soon as that becomes final. So, again, thanks for the opportunity. We appreciate the partnership. Even your county attorney, we do a lot with your county attorney here, too. We've had some doozies. So, it's just been, it's been, we really appreciate the partnership. It's been great, and I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you guys may have.
Questions?
I just thank you for all the work that you've done, and all the help that you've provided.
Well, it's, it's been, it's been a team effort. And again, I, I want to take the opportunity to thank the county commissioners, and Mr. Carter, and all the team, for what you guys did for our families. We're helping in Tropical Storm Fred, down in Haywood County. Transferring those RVs that we had down there to the county, big impact. Families are using those things. So, again, thank you for, for doing that. That was, that was a great, great, great gesture for the county to do that. So, we certainly appreciate that.
What this county would have done without the, with the recovery funds that you've, you've brought with you, and the state approved, and administered such a great job.
We, we certainly appreciate it. And again, we continue all, appreciate all the support, and look forward to keep moving forward. So, thank you, Mr. Carter, and I'm sure we'll probably be chatting some more here soon.
We are excited that you're excited about the 90 South Main.
There you go, absolutely.
I would ask you to walk across this table. I think we all want to shake your hand, and properly thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Chairman, I just have one other comment. And it, I didn't say it earlier, but I would like to take just a minute, and, and appreciate Commissioner Mark, Commissioner Bill, for your time, that you've been here. We're here when I was, I was brought in, you were part of bringing me in. Now, that could be good or bad. Both of you aren't coming back, so I don't know what that says. But, you know, I, I for one, appreciate that. I know, in the early scope of it, Mark and I, and Mark was the first commissioner contacting me by telephone. And we had some communication back and forth. And Bill, you were actually here on my first day, for a few hours. And I think that, you know, from, from me, what you guys have done to, to support, encourage, and promote, I really appreciate. And I know that you won't necessarily be sitting behind that, that table anymore, but I'm sure the relationships, and, uh, they'll continue, and I look forward to that part of it as well. So, I just wanted to say thank you, for what you've done. So I just wanted to say thank you for what you've done.
Thank you. Appreciate those kind comments. Moving on down to county commissioner comments. Mark?
I don't have a lot, I just, I was, would, with the time, the season, time of the year we're in, the season, Thanksgiving's upon us, I am, I am very thankful, very blessed for family, community, and, and all that I've been a part of here, and I just hope everyone would maybe take some time during the holidays and, and reflect on what a great place it is we have to, to live and to live together. And then further, right behind that is Christmas and the, the season there and, and know, celebrate Christmas.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioner John?
In speaking with Lisa Osborne before the meeting, Department of Social Services, they had a full, a fuel supplement program that was available in Allegheny County. This is to help with fuel cost. In just a little over two days, $44,000 was distributed in Allegheny County to people that cannot meet their fuel cost. There's a new program that is coming into, well, it's a reinstatement of a program called a LEAP, L-I-E-A-P. Now, this is for seniors over 60 years of age. If you received money under this program last year, you should have received a letter already telling you that you are qualified for assistance this year. Don't know how much money that involves, but in speaking with David today, K1 kerosene is over $7 a gallon. I received a phone call this weekend from an individual that did not have money to put fuel in her tank. The fuel is now over $5. If you've got a 100 gallon tank, that's over $500, and for those citizens of Allegheny County, 38% of this county is over age 65, living on a fixed income, that is a serious hit. This time last year, my wife works at the food closet, it was normally 15 to 20 people a day would ask for assistance. For the last three weeks, they have worked over 30 a day. Inflation is going to impact us, it's going to impact this county, and it's something that the Budget Committee is really going to have to look at. Cost of heating these buildings are going to go up. Where the money's going to come from, it's got to be property tax, and it's something that they're going to have to look at. But we are not alone. Dale Falwell was on a program on PBS this Saturday, I recorded and I can't remember the name of the program. Right now, there are 179 municipalities and counties under investigation by the Department of Treasury, and we would have been on there except for the diligent efforts of the county manager and the, and the staff of this county that had us taken off the watch list. 179. One municipality has, all finances has been taken out from their control. Our manager was paying her mother's old folks home bill through county funds and on the memo putting her name on it. I mean, this is, this is unbelievable, but it happens. You have a dedicated staff in this county, as evidenced by Daniel Rotten getting us into that storm ready program. You don't see too much of what goes on in county government or any government. You know, you, whenever they make a mistake, then it comes out and we crucify them. But the everyday worker, they just gets out there and does their job and gets things done, we aren't going to recognize them that much because there's no, nothing involved. You let something go wrong, or we get sued, then all of a sudden the spotlight's on them. Those workers walk off to transfer station, next thing you know, we've got garbage coming out of our ears. That is essential, and it's nice whenever we recognize our retirees that have stood the ground, stood to watch, gotten out there and just basically done the job. If you're moving garbage, it don't smell good, but it's got to be done. When it snows, snow's got to be removed so that we can get in and we can carry on. County government works 24/7. Don't take vacation, we still got to get out there and we've got to do it, and it's able to be done by these dedicated workers that we have. And it's nice to know that whenever they finally reach that point to where they can go home and put their feet up, that we do recognize them. So thank them for their work. The election's over, the people have spoken, it is amazing to me. 75% of the people in the United States say we're going in the wrong direction, yet 96% of the incumbents were reelected. The people that are doing the things that we don't like, we put back in office, and it reminds me again that one definition of insanity is doing the same thing expecting different results. God bless America. Hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving. Remember those that stand to watch, that won't be home with their families, that keep us safe. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Bobby?
The holidays are coming up, and I think that we're all aware of the cost of fuel, diesel fuel. The scarcity of ability of diesel fuels what's really scaring me right now. But as you can see in some of the bids that we've received, a lot of that has to do with transportation and with the operation of fixing some of these, some of these programs that we're trying to do. It's 90 South, but it's impacting the whole county, it's impacting especially the older people. So we need to be on a watchful eye to help as many people as we can. Me, this past few weeks, I've spent a lot of time in Raleigh, and part of that reasoning is on some new programs at the Community College Center, the community colleges that are going to be offering the state of North Carolina, especially in the 911 communications and operations. Richmond County Community College is the first community college in North Carolina. Richmond Community College is the first in the state to offer this program, and also we're the first in the United States to offer a 911 communications operation certificate and diploma. The 911 department has been in a working relationship with Richmond to create, create this program. They've set up all the qualifications, and I'm hoping within the next few months that this will spread to all the community colleges in the state where we can have a certified 911 operator, which is going to be required to have 40 hours of, of, of college credits. That will include GPS, GIS, the whole ramification of this program is to use the 911 system to be sure that the right person is dispatched to that problem, and they will also be trained in medical emergencies to talk to the patient. But this is, this is by far, I think, one of the great steps for the community colleges is we're the first in the nation to offer this, offer this class. Also, on the same, at the same meeting, we approved a, what's called a minors bill for minors who are at least 15 years old and less than 18 years old, and who are uncompensated members of a bona fide fire department or rescue squad. That's pursuant to GS 95-25N, may enroll in fire training courses. This is a big step in trying to upgrade, create a pipeline for fire departments and for rescue squads that hasn't been available before. And there again, I'd look for Surry Community and Wilkes Community, all the regional community colleges to start offering this program. As everybody knows, the fire department, volunteer fire departments are shrinking all the time. So this is a, a great step moving forward to try to see that we have some trained, seasoned people in the near future. That's my report for the community colleges. I would like to say again that it's been an honor to serve with Mark, it's been an honor to serve with Bill. I think this board has learned a lot from them, and they've, they've done a very good job for the citizens of Allegheny County, and I personally thank both of them again. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Bobby.
I would like to give a, some kudos to the Board of Elections for a well-run election, and thank you to all the volunteers. If you stopped in to vote, then you saw all the volunteers that they had helping out and on Election Day also. So again, it would be, we would be hard pressed in this county to get much accomplished unless we had our volunteers, so. Went to a chamber event this week at the Sparta Candle Company, and I encourage the public to come out to any kind of open house that the chamber has, they really highlight the businesses that we have. I had no idea what was going on in our county at this little candle store in town. They're, they're shipping out over 150 packages a day. They have a healthy online business, they have well above average wages, they have a dozen or so employees, and just, you know, they're in the basement of this building, they're making all these, these candles, and to me, that's, you know, what small business is the future of our county. And I was just really impressed with, with Jennifer and her operation there. So again, anytime there's, there's a, a chamber event, I try to go to all that I can, and I encourage the public to do the same because you really don't know what's going on in your county until you go to something like this, so. Also want to say thanks to Bill and Mark, I enjoyed serving with you both, and nobody really realizes until you sit in this chair how many hours go in. It's not just a couple of meetings a month, it's phone calls, emails every day, and, and also being. And I've learned from both of you. Congratulations to Bobby for his reelection, and look forward to serving with Timmy Evans and Big Walker, so.
I don't have much to add, I just want to reiterate, I appreciate the department heads, and I appreciate our employees. We've got a good group, and to prove that point, when the earthquake happened, we was, we was shuffling around, Daniel was in charge of stuff up there, and, but the point being, when they needed somebody to help out, they volunteered from other, other offices, they went to the need, and, and that's the way it is. You got to do what it takes to get the job done, I don't care where you're at, and that's just the attitude that everybody has, and, and that's much to be appreciated for that. And yeah, I remember the first morning, Michael Carter come to work, we, Drew and, and April, we met him in the office and welcomed him there, and I handed him that letter from the state, and he always takes every, every problem with a challenge. He likes challenges, I think, and, but he knew exactly what we need to do, and, and we got going with it, and, and you're going to hear the results of it here for long, and it's, it's outstanding. But I just appreciate all he's done, and, and all the commissioners, I, I thank each and every one of you, it's, it's been a good ride, it's been very rewarding, a very good experience, and I want to back up to Larry Prince, three years ago, before Michelle came on, sat right here, and, and Larry, we had a good friendship developer, Larry's a good guy, and he gave me a lot of encouragement at a time when I really needed it, and I appreciate that from Larry. Anyway, the, wish everybody a happy holidays and, and the season, and let's remember what the real season's about, but let's enjoy it with our kids and our grandkids and, and all that. And I want to pass on one little thing to the future board that I was told when I came down here by a good friend, and, and standing right out here in this side parking lot one day, Russell Sheets, he said, "Bill, there's two words that you don't need to use much of at all, but there's one word you really need to use. The two words you don't use is I and me." And you think about that, it's not about I, and it's not about me, it's about we as a board. That's the direction the board is, not a one-person board, there's five of us sitting here, everybody has ideas and so forth, and, and I hope they remember that moving forward, and I'm sure they will, and I'm, I'm proud of the new guys coming on, wish them well, and I really feel like that everything will move along good. I really think the county's in the right direction. I know the nation's in another direction, but I think Allegheny County is, is moving in the right, in the right direction, and. Anyway, a funny thing happened about a week ago here, we, I came in here one day and, to see the managers, and they weren't here, but anyway, I turned the corner and I noticed my name tag was gone off our mailboxes back here. We all got mailboxes that, back here in the corner, I don't know, there's 20 or 25 of them, but my name tag is gone, and I just kind of laughed back to myself, you know? We got to looking at the security tape, and it, it amazed me that, that the gentleman that got it, and he's my good friend over here.
Yep, I admit it, and a good friend that removed me from all the committees.
Well, that is what it is, and you brought that upon yourself, so, but it was, it amazed me that you'd be the one to, to get the name tag, but that's good, keep it for a souvenir, throw it in the trash can or whatever, but I found that comical. Anyway, moving on, that's all I have seen, I appreciate everybody, and, and I really do. We have a request for a closed session under General Statute 143-318-11-dot-A-6 personnel.
Include April Hand, please.
Include April on the, on the closed session, so do I, do I hear a motion?
I move.
Second.
All in favor? Five votes. Bring your plaque. They haven't bring their plaques with them.